Posted written notice on official bulletin boards at Endeavor School, Upper Elementary School, and C.B. Lamb Schools. Electronically forwarded written notice to the Bronx Manhattan Times, filing written notice with the clerk of Northamtown Township, filing written notice with the members and secretary of this body, nailing written notice to each person who has requested copies of the regular meeting schedule, who has prepaid and charged for such service. This is in compliance with Department of Chapter 231, Open Public Meetings Law, Public Laws, nineteen seventy five.
Green?
Yeah.
Green Leonard?
Here.
Knighton? Mara? Ready?
Here.
Um, the executive session will now put to the end unless somebody had personal questions.
I don't think anything else in exec requires you to take any action, so we can do it at the end since we have close to a percent.
Okay, so we do have a few people here to present tonight. As you've heard me say before, one of the conditions of receiving a DODIA grant is that you have to communicate frequently and often, frequently and as widely as possible about the activities of the grant. So I asked two of our grant managers here, directors, Mrs. Work and Mr. Danley, to come tonight. You've heard a little bit about the grant that Mrs. Guinan is overseeing. At the, I think it was the last meeting, I talked a little bit about it because we had just been awarded it, so we're just getting that off the ground. But I thought an update on the other two grants was in order, so I'll ask, are you guys presenting together?
No, we're gonna have to present separate. Can you, oh, I'm just waiting, you want to start?
Yeah.
Marcella's gonna join us.
Okay.
She's heading down now.
All right.
That's the first one.
Got it.
I'll pull yours up. I don't know. Take the next one, Jason. That one, yeah.
All right, there we go.
So, to introduce myself, for anyone who doesn't know me, my name is Jason Danley, and I am the project director for one of our DODIA grants titled Project PEACE. And a little bit about what Project PEACE is, first, what P stands for is Physical Activity Emotional and Academics for Cognitive Engagement. Now, what it is, it's one of our DODIA grants that we were awarded in two thousand twenty-two. It's a five-year grant, so it ends in two thousand twenty-seven. It is for one million dollars. And the main objective is to increase physical activity and purposeful movement for all students, as well as enhance social and emotional capacity for our students. We want our students to be in the right mindset so they can be engaged learners. I apologize if you can't see.
No.
Thanks, I can't.
Thanks, no.
So, anytime I go to a DODIA meeting, they always say, two things are a must: spend all the money, and anything you do has to align to the goals that you come up, you came up on. You cannot change those things. So, goal number one is, we are looking to increase math proficiency for students in grades three through six through the grade. Goal number two is, we are looking to decrease out-of-classroom behavioral referral for our students. If you're not in the classroom, and you're not self-regulated, you can't learn. So, we're looking at math and behavioral data. Math, what we're looking at, we look at our New Jersey SLA scores, our STAR-360 scores, our IEM assessment, we look at teacher observation, teacher notes, and also student feedback. How do you feel around your mathematical practices, and why you're doing it? For the out-of-classroom data, we ask the teachers three times a year, for one week, to collect how many students, do you need someone to come and support them because of a behavior issue? They're self-regulated, they're not regulated, they're not in the right state of mind to learn, and they can't be in the classroom. So what have we done so far? I'm a firm believer, and our district is too, before we can support the staff, or students, and have them grow, we gotta grow first, right? So, we do a lot of professional development for the staff through this grant. We partnered with Thrive University and Joelle Hood. She did a whole staff presentation of social-emotional growth for students, but our only student, how are you feeling, and what can you do to be in the right state of mind? And then also activities to build connections among the students that are in our classroom and in our schools. We also drilled deeper in that work. So, we met with Joelle Hood eight times last year, there was about thirty staff members on that, in all three of our buildings on there, and we worked with her. How can we build connections with our staff? How can we make sure that staff feels connected to the school? How can they feel connected with each other? If you're happy coming to work, and you're happy with the people you work with, you're gonna work harder, and you're gonna work more efficiently. And then that carries over to our students. On there, how can we spark curiosity with our students? How can we make engaging classrooms? So, about thirty staff members, we've met eight times with Joelle Hood, and we worked hard at it, but we just didn't keep all of that for ourselves. We turnkeyed that out to our faculty meetings, and we did building connection activities. And the results we got back from that work was phenomenal in all three buildings. We increased our inventory of classroom movement equipment, so teachers can sign out if they think that would benefit a student. They can sign out one of these under-the-desk ellipticals, we have under-the-desk pedal bikes, we have these wobble boards that they can access, we have duck boards, we have label feet, we have wobble seats, things that have weird names on there, but it's all around movement for students. And staff does a wonderful job of pinpointing students that this would benefit. So, teachers can sign it out, behavior coaches can sign it out, our focus intervention team, our special area teachers, anyone has access to this equipment on there. We partnered with Care Solus. They help provide outside mental services for our students, right? You gotta, if you need help outside of school, we partnered with them. With families, usually where it stops is, is you gotta make those calls all the time. People don't have time to do that, right? And that's where it usually stops. On their Care Solus, their team, they take that load off of the parents, they connect them with providers, they send the emails, they send the text messages, they do all the phone calls, they set up all the appointments for the families to make sure that their students get the care outside of school. And it's just not for students, too, it's for our families, too, and it's for our staff, too, you know, making sure that we're all in a right state of mind. So, the PEACE project allows for us to partner with them. We have a PACE lab. This is a before instructional period one, students that have been identified by the classroom teachers, or focus intervention team, or special area, or anyone on staff can refer a student to come before first period and get a cardiovascular workout. And it's just not students with behavior needs, it could be attendance needs, it could be connection with peers, self-confidence, they're shy. And again, staff does an awesome job pinpointing those students that maybe just would get lost, that movement can help support them and connect them with school. There's so much research behind movement for learning, that I wish we could have every kid come in early and do a workout on here. We have extracurricular rooms at Endeavor and C.B. Lamb, so there are high-tech purchases. If you go in those rooms, you'll see dance pads, you'll see bikes, and you'll see kids pedaling bikes while they're going through the Alps on there, because it's on a TV screen, and they're pedaling through on there. You'll see them in one of our smart boards where it lights up, and you gotta press it, so they're working on hand-eye coordination, they're crossing the midline. This is a picture of the i-beam on there, which projects on the floors, and you see these preschoolers, they're stomping it out, trying to get those bugs. It is no doubt that that is so much fun, that the kids are having a lot of fun. Good evening.
Sorry, my dog got loose and I had to chase the dog.
No. Did you get the dog?
I won.
All right, you won, all right.
I apologize.
That depends.
We're just ready.
We're just ready to private media, we're gonna, everyone's okay. No doubt that the kids are having fun while they're doing it, but the science behind it, they are exhausting their bodies so the brain is ready to learn on there. We have heart rate watches, so any student that's in the PACE lab wears a heart rate watch. Study shows if your heart rate gets elevated, could be a good thing, if you're just working out, and you're dominating that, or it could be a bad thing, saying that I'm feeling some type of emotion here, I'm getting dysregulated. Those watches help those kids use the strategies that they learned at the PACE lab, that they learned with the school counselor during their character education, that they're put, able to put in play and stay in attention everywhere. So, those are things that we have done so far. And I wanna show you kind of what has the data showed us right now, as we're going into year three. Seven percent increase in mathematical proficiency for STAR-360 for students in grades three through six, trending in the right way. Out-of-classroom referrals for behavior, down nineteen percent from year one to year two, again, trending in the right way. We just collected trimester one data for this year, and I'm a little nervous because it was so good, that I don't know if we can beat it for trimester two, trimester three. But, I mean, it's great work as we continue to go on and these practices are in place. So, quantitative, the numbers are important, but I'm a firm believer of how do you feel? Like, how is this making the students feel about themselves? And these are some things that teachers have said, since participating in the PACE lab, the student's attendance has increased, you're in school, you're learning, and exhibited an increase in self-regulation. I love this one. He also now loves to talk about exercise, it's like life-changing right there. And then increase in both math and the ALI STAR scores, that's not bingo, right? That's good, that's good. On there, hundred percent of students that participate in the PACE lab, they found benefit of it, right? Students are finding value in it. I could go through pages and pages on there, still, but can focus now if we're in class, can calm himself. So this is, this is great data that kind of just continues to fuel the work that we're doing, that this is so important, that it's making a difference for our students. So what are we doing this school year? Like I mentioned before, professional development is key, and we're not stopping that, so we partner with School Moves. So our vision now is, we want movement in all our classrooms, and this School Moves professional development is gonna allow that to happen. We already had one round already, where it was a two-day in-person, we had our focus intervention team, our instructional coaches were there, and our behavioral coaches were there. I'm hoping that it gets approved tonight, is for a second round, to get our pull-out resource teachers, our in-class resource teachers, our PE teachers, and our school counselors to do a second round. And then we'll kind of continue that until we can get as many people trained in School Moves, and in every classroom as possible. The nice thing about this, it's no tech, right? It's just, you just need your body for this, which is so important, because this can go on wherever they, wherever they go, however old they are. We have coming to the Upper Elementary School the extracurricular equipment, we have a meeting December fifth, to solidify the date that they can come in and start installing that equipment here, so we're looking forward to that. If I had my say, we could install it already, but, so is best. We are going to be doing an after-school club that's focused around math intervention paired with movement, that's gonna be happening this school year, I'm working with Denise Guinan, and also the instructional coach to pinpoint some of our students that would benefit from that. We met with, as a Project PEACE leadership team last week, and they gave some great feedback of what equipment is being signed out in the classroom, what equipment is just collecting dust that we're not finding benefit for, so we can move forward with a purpose and intent of what's getting us the best value for our students and making the most difference. So, we're looking forward to ordering more equipment and getting them in classrooms this school year. And why, this is our future right here, right? These are preschoolers in the extracurricular room, all excited. This little girl did not get the high school score, but look at that smile on her face, this pure excitement and joy. This kid's working in their extracurricular rooms, crossing the midline and having a blast. I just wanna end it with a thank you. Thank you to DODIA for providing this opportunity for our students here, and thank you to the staff at Northam, right? This is, it's innovative, it's visionary, it takes building connections and an understanding of having a growth mindset, and the staff has been phenomenal here. The administration team, they're always on board of supporting this. Ms. Payne, always, always supporting this kind of work, and these ideas of what's gonna get the best results for our students, and especially the board of that. I greatly appreciate your support with Project PEACE and these DODIA grants, it's making a true difference for all our students, so I just wanna say thank you. And I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving, and a safe Thanksgiving, and if there's any questions about this, I can field it now, or I'll be here afterward as well. So, any questions now? And if you think of any, I'll be here till the end, all right? So, thank you so much for your time.
All right, so the next, I don't remember where I am. So, we have had three active DODIA grants, we added a fourth active. We had a math grant that closed, then we had this grant, which is Project Hello. Project Hello is focused on building biliteracy in our students, increasing proficiency in Spanish, and also just providing community activities and global awareness to our kids. Many of you have had the opportunity to attend our World Culture Festival, so I had to put this picture up, this is last year's Spanish team at the World Culture Festival. This year, this year's date, if you wanna write it down to attend, is February thirteenth. The whole community is invited, it's a community celebration. If you have not been yet, I do encourage you to come, the gym was full last year. We had over sixty families that wanted to share their culture, or wanted to share things that they've experienced, such as when they lived in Japan, so, or Germany. It's just an incredible night of music and dancing, and it's open to our whole community. This is just the start of our grant, this day, I was not here because I have COVID memories, so this celebration will not without me, I'm not there. However, the grant really has focused on continuing to celebrate. It kicked off with a celebration, and we continued to celebrate this whole time. One thing about Hello, it has a very clear vision. We believe, and when we wrote the grant, we were committed that learning a language is a twenty-first century skill. These kids living in, are going to be growing up in a different landscape than what we grew up as children. We know that language learning impacts the brain positively, it actually has the same benefits that the brain would have if you were learning math at a really high level. In fact, the problem-solving and critical thinking skills that are developed through learning a second language cannot be mimicked by any other field. So that's a really important point that I want the community to understand. The benefits of language learning go well beyond our kids being able to recite phrases in Spanish. It changes the brain exponentially, so they can solve critical problems, even if they never become proficient in the language which they're learning as a child. So, our grant goals, as Jason reviewed our grant goals, the World Language Goals also has two goals. The first one is to build proficiency in the second language, we do that for third through sixth grade. The second goal is that kids are positive about learning language. Learning a language is very, very difficult. As you all know, I do not do well in learning languages, and I am not bilingual. However, you have to like what you're doing, you have to have a positive experience when you're young, in order for you to ever to continue to do this after, like, and to become proficient, it's a lot of work. So, some of our strategies are, we do after-school programming, we have an after-school club called Passport Club. It meets for two six-week sessions, sessions, twelve weeks total throughout the school year. We have a summer immersion program, which our first through third graders come, and they spend three hours. Our great Spanish teachers, one of them is here, the other one I think is coming down the stairs in a minute, I told her exactly what's first. Our, our world language teachers, they only speak to first through graders only in the target language of Spanish. And for three hours, these kids do incredible things, they do artwork, they do crafts, all in Spanish, they do like themes, this year was the ocean, all in Spanish for three hours for two full weeks. It's incredible after that time, what these kids are able to do in the target language at the age of seven years old. The other piece, we have our after-school, we have our World Culture Festival. Our Spanish lessons, though, are one of the most exciting things about our grant. Our kids get Spanish three times per week, fifth and sixth grade get two forty-five-minute lessons, but everyone else gets it three times a week. But our Spanish curriculum is designed in a way that the whole, there are smaller lessons, and the whole thing is done in the target language, in Spanish. So, what we are doing is, we have developed a curriculum through the grants that is proficiency-driven, meaning we are not just exposing them to Spanish, but as they're growing up, as they're progressing through the age, we want them to be proficient as proficient as possible. So, we're using the ACT Full Proficiency Scale, and when we started the grant with our former Spanish program, that was one time a week for forty-five minutes, really ninety-nine percent of our kids were novice low. Just within two years of the changes we made to our Spanish program, we've had a huge leap, more than fifty percent of our kids are novice high, which is an incredible, and they're meeting expectations, and they're on their target to be proficient if they continue through middle school and high school. So, our curriculum is not just learning numbers and colors. Our curriculum is really talking about other things, they're relating it to things they're learning in the classroom. They are learning about how to talk about themselves and their families, how to talk about their home, how to talk about their communities. They have different types of units, such as like a theme of the ocean, they might be learning all about ocean animals, they had, had like hibernation, so our first graders were learning about hibernation, which they were also learning about in school, so they're carrying their language across different subject areas and content. So what makes our program so successful? The short classes, kids can focus for that twenty minutes in a target language. We also incorporate a lot of things that we learned from PEACE, we have a lot of movement, a lot of music, it's very, very engaging. But our teachers, can you find standing up? We have two teachers here today, they are absolutely fabulous. Our teachers are the most engaging actresses in Northamover, and I just wanted them to kind of share, just a little bit if they're comfortable, of what this program has meant to them.
It's too many proud, I've been working at UES for eight years, we've been doing this for almost three years, and as one of the teachers who studied here eight years ago, I'm extremely proud and honored to be working this way. Numbers say everything. It's not like, oh yeah, really, well, you see the numbers we assess, and you see the big difference, and uh, thank you for our principals, without her we couldn't do it. She is a great help, and I'm very proud of being working with her, and I'm so excited.
Hi, I'm Limaris Matias, right now I am teaching third and fourth grade at Endeavor. Last year was my first year here, I came from Texas, I'm a military spouse, the first time ever that I have worked in this type of program. At first I was, what? What is this? I got the hang of it, I love it, the kids love it, the kids love seeing you, they love participating, they love learning, not just about themselves, they love to learn about others' culture, other communities, other countries. They get very, very excited, they are all for it, and one of the things that I love the most is, we have population that moves a lot, we're saying goodbye to many and hello to many, and these kids, we've gotten students that have never been in a classroom where Spanish is spoken, and you see our kids presenting themselves in Spanish, and teaching them how to say Spanish. Also, I remember at C.B. Lamb, I had students that were English language learners, and they didn't know English, and our kids welcomed them in Spanish, and they got so excited, you could see the excitement, that someone understood them, that it made them, it made them happy and excited to learn English, because they wanted to do the same things the others were doing. So, thank you, support is amazing, I have to say, and it's not because they are here. First time ever I have worked at a, at a district for the support for this program, programs and the teachers.
I agree, so thank you, Mrs. Payne, thank you for doing this. By the way, I'm a sixth middle line, so I teach fourth, fifth, and sixth grade here at UES. I used to be at C.B. Lamb, I used to teach everyone, from kindergarten to sixth grade. With all these changes, obviously I'm just doing fourth, fifth, and sixth, and it works perfect. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And feel free to, well, visit our classrooms if you want to see the action and see the kids. Anytime. And he's gonna be tired when you leave.
Thank you guys so much.
So, I mean, they say it all, really, I mean, I'm gonna show you some pictures that also tell the rest of the story, but just some highlights. I talked about the World Culture Festival, we had a hundred and fifty kids interested in Passport Club, we've had a waiting list every single season that it's ran, every session. We've exceeded our grant goals for reading, listening, and speaking for grades three through five. The end of the grant goals, which we did in two years of implementation, which is great. We're in our third year of implementation right now. We are at capacity every year for the immersion camp. The immersion camp is a small group of kids, because it is all in Spanish, the entire three hours. So, we have a, we could have done the camp three times and filled up every single time if we would have allowed everyone, if we would have had the time in the weeks to allow everyone to come. On a big thing, last weekend, the team was invited, and we accepted an offer to present at a national conference, which is huge for our teachers. To present at a national conference is a way of recognition, and in January, there will be people from the Department of Ed who will be looking at our Spanish program to hopefully designate us a model school for world language, and that all happened within three years. So this team has been extremely busy, very, very busy, flipping the curriculum, changing how they teach Spanish, and they're getting the recognition that they deserve. So, thank you guys so much for your support and your understanding of that. This is a STEM, this is a twenty-first century skill, which is huge for us. So here's just two graphs of the difference, the brown is baseline, and the green is the end of, end of last year. So we've already met all of our goals, and this is just a snapshot, I have a ton of graphs, if you wanna sit and look at graphs with me, I just really enjoy them. Here's some of our teachers in action, Hasting Current. This is, is the summer immersion camp, they had matching t-shirts this year, had so much fun. And then this is just some highlights of, they are learning about the seasons, correct?
Earth day.
Earth day. All right, so our next step, again, please come to the World Culture Festival, it's going to be February thirteenth at six thirty. We're gonna continue to differentiate, our students' reading level surpassed what even our consultant believed was possible in the type of program we built. So, we have to differentiate our curriculum even more, because our students are reading in Spanish. We had a fifth grader the other day sit up and give a presentation, his English is his first language, he sat up and gave a presentation fully, he read the whole paragraph in Spanish, he sounded amazing. We're continuing to find opportunities for our heritage speakers, continuing to show them the path to biliteracy is both reading, writing, and speaking. We're integrating virtual reality, and so our kids will be able to go on field trips to Spain, to Mexico, to Montepicu, we're really excited about that. And then, we're continuing to build out assessments as we grow the program, so that we can do checks along the way for understanding. Any questions about Hello?
I think you've just answered three of my four questions. Do all the children participate in this, or can they opt out?
They all participate, however, in sixth grade, which we didn't talk about, because there's so much to talk about in this grant, in sixth grade students have the opportunity to choose a language. They can choose Spanish, they can choose Mandarin or French. Mandarin or French are done synchron- Mandarin or French are done synchronously on Zoom with a certified teacher and an assist helping kind of organize materials and keeping kids on task. So at sixth grade, they make that choice. Spanish has always been available to all of our students. This, the structure looks a little bit different with the grant.
And they have for-school and summer is option.
Yeah. After-school, summer is option.
So up until the fifth and sixth grade, everybody does the Spanish program, even the students who are Spanish-speaking?
Yes. Our Spanish teachers have been working hard to differentiate. We do have a population of Spanish-speaking firsts. Spanish is their first language. And so we are working as a team to differentiate more and more as they become more comfortable with the program.
Okay, and I think you answered that they are learning to read in that language also.
Yes. All of our programs, we're learning to read, write, and speak, even from the very first time they're in Spanish in kindergarten. We're still exposing them to words written and writing. There's a heavier emphasis on heritage speakers, so they have an additional after-school opportunity to kind of dig further in. Because we know that many students who are English-speaking firsts, they don't always get the opportunity to learn to read in their first language. And if you learn to read in your first language, you are much more successful and read faster than if you get instruction in your first language than if you just do your second language.
And you mentioned that you're working on ways to evaluate students.
So we do already evaluate through this, it uses stamp for SE. It's a standardized assessment for language, like that assesses the language level of students. That's how we have the actual proficiency levels. However, we want to do more common formative assessments now that our students that are in the upper grades are reading and writing already in Spanish, which they weren't doing significantly before the grant.
Sounds like a fantastic program.
It's so much fun. Come see it. So, and the team really wanted me to tell the board that they would love to have you. They would love for you guys to see their program in action. They're very proud, and I can't tell you how proud I am of the teachers that we have. We have three teachers right now. We're waiting for our fourth to onboard. And they're just, they're just all so amazing. Any other questions?
Can I say something? I'm sorry. I believe, and I have spoken to April about it. I believe that our sixth graders, whenever they go to seventh grade, if they are going to take Spanish and it's Level One, they're going to be very bored. They're going to be very bored. And I was, you know, is there a way that we can work with that school district to have those kids go to a higher-level Spanish class?
Which is a great problem to have. It's definitely not something that we anticipated. We want, we obviously want to increase proficiency. We didn't dream that even in just in two short years that we would have kids that are not as high moving into intermediate-low. And just so you know, to be, to get the seal of biliteracy, which opens up lots of doors for all students, English-speaking students and Spanish-speaking-first students. To get the seal of biliteracy, they get college credits for the seal. On top of the college credits that they get for the seal, they can also put it on their resume. And many employers who are looking for like a receptionist, or really anyone of many employers, if you have the seal of biliteracy, you get a higher starting salary or a higher starting hourly wage to do a job that no one else can do. I can't train for a year. I can do a lot of things in a year, but I can't be biliterate in a year. So it's showing perseverance and commitment that the workforce really desperately needs. Any other questions? Hi, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Which one are you opening now? Can you pull my microphone?
Just a little bit.
Yeah.
Kind of a tough act to follow.
All exciting stuff.
She's not going mine.
I have to pull up first, too. I'm hoping it's here, shared with me. Yep. There it is. Oh, it's so fallish. Okay, so if you remember back in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we underwent CUSAC evaluation by the state of New Jersey. CUSAC stands for Quality Single Accountability Continuum. Basically, it's several hundred different indicators that districts are assessed on. And the end result is it determines the quality of your district after going through the process. So we submitted all of our evaluation of those indicators back in December of 2023 based on data from students on April of 2023. Okay, so it was about two years ago that this information is based on. There are five areas that we get evaluated on. Each area is worth one hundred points. You need eighty points to pass a particular area. Five areas are personnel, operations, governance, fiscal, and instruction and program. In the personnel section, we had a hundred percent. Some of the things, just to give you an idea of what does that mean? That means that our evaluations were completed on time, that the feedback was proper, that we have attendance tracking procedures in place, adequate resources are being devoted to our teachers' professional learning. I think that should be obvious from our board meetings, that we spend a lot of, we really take that very seriously. We're spending our time appropriately. The mandatory trainings that the state says we have to do are being done. We have a good mentoring program. We track residencies of our incoming staff and their licensure appropriately. We have good onboarding and screening. Our positions all match the business administrator's budget. And we have adequate documentation of supervision by our administrative team and feedback. So they look at all of those things. We have to upload a lot of documents, and then they come in and audit personnel files. In operations, that's another area. We had ninety-three percent. We had accurate New Jersey Smart and CBS data. We have appropriate data management processes in place. All our reports are submitted in a timely fashion. Almost all of our reports were submitted in a timely fashion. There are hundreds of reports. We use our data to track student progress. We have a code of conduct in place. Our hip processes and our violence and vandalism processes are being met appropriately. We have school climate teams in place. Our transportation is working as it should. Our nursing services and our immunizations meet code. And our suspensions are consistent with the law. There are a lot of restrictions around suspension. And then our safety and security practices are in place as well. We missed one indicator out of all indicators in that section, and that was our gifted and talented report was filed late. So we put ninety-three percent in that area. And we've already shifted who's responsible for that gifted and talented report. So now it's two of you. So next time, it'll be on time. It was not her when it was late. Governance, we had ninety-four percent. Our policies are all reviewed and updated. The my contract, Amy's contract, evaluations are in place. Any corrective action plans are being implemented. Our budget meets our instructional priorities. We are doing our Oprah processes appropriately, our meeting minutes and reports and disclosure forms. And those disclosure forms that Amy nabbed you guys for, that's part of what we get evaluated on. And our library tech and media resources are appropriately funded. My evaluation was not completed on time, so we lost a couple of points for that. In the area of fiscal management, we had a hundred percent. Our board secretary's reports were done well. Our audits, our standard operating procedures are all clean and in place as they're supposed to be. We don't operate with any deficits. Our grants are well-managed and compliant. Our accounting practices are sound. Our budget calendar is in place. Our facilities meets standards. Our cash flow is managed well, and our purchasing is properly conducted. And I can tell you without a doubt that Mrs. Lerner makes sure all of those things are true. There's no way. Which is good. That's her job. And then the only area where we have some improvement to make is instruction and program. And I have more information for you on this one. Instruction and program measures student achievements, our performance reporting, that we have all of the required components in our curriculum documents, that our curriculum guides are current and detailed in all instructional areas. All NJSLS student learning standards are accounted for in those curriculum documents. Our policies and procedures for a continuum of supports for students are in place. All of those things are in place. The only thing that we did not get all the points for here is the student achievement measure. We did great in student growth. We had a high score in student growth, but our student achievement was not as high as it needed to be. So let me give you a little bit of context for that. Remember, this was 2023, based on student data from the spring of 2023, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. It was post-pandemic. Can bring you back to a point that you all probably don't want to remember, and we were really struggling with student behavior. Kids had a lot of mental health needs. They had a lot of self-regulation needs. And we were putting all of our energy into meeting those needs. We also had the kids that benefited from us being open during the pandemic left, started leaving our district at that point in time. And so while the first year that we were back, that everyone was back in school and we had testing, we excelled because we were open. We lost those kids that benefited from that. And we brought in a lot of kids who had any number of different experiences. At the same time, we had rapid population growth. I think in, over one summer, we gained about a hundred and fifty students. And that meant we were adding staff really quickly. And then we had some administrative turnover, and our coaching staff turned over as well. So it's kind of a perfect storm at that point in time. That being said, I want to take a look at some comparative information and let you know that about seventy percent, and I think I'm lowballing that number. I think it's actually closer to eighty percent of the districts that went through the CUSAC process in twenty-three, twenty-four did not pass instruction and program. Okay, so it's not okay for me, but I do feel like we have some good company. In fact, so many districts didn't pass instruction and program that they re-weighted the entire CUSAC process. So now, it's more heavily weighted on student growth, not that achievement score. So if you're growing kids, that is, that's more important in the CUSAC process now than if they're actually hitting a certain target. And when they talk about achievement, what they're looking for is on a five-point scale, that kids have to be Level Four or Level Five. So kids who are just about there, you get zero, zero points. You have to be at Four or Five. But comparative, in ELA third grade, we were at forty-five percent proficiency. The districts that are like us in our DFG were at thirty-eight percent. So we were well above our DFG average. Fourth grade, forty-four percent. The other districts were thirty-three percent. Math, forty-one percent in third grade. The other districts were twenty-three percent. Math, fourth grade, we were forty-five percent. Our comparative districts were twenty-six percent. And science, we were twenty-six percent, and the other districts were thirteen percent. So although I am not pleased with missing the eighty percent mark in instruction and program, I think that the context is important. So as I mentioned, CUSAC is now being re-weighted. They're rewriting some of the code to allow that to happen. They will not retroactively apply it, though. It really caused quite enough war in the state when this happened. But, so the districts that go through it this year should be under the new scoring system. Science, that science score only represents a very small subset of our kids. They only test science in fifth grade. And so that alone makes it somewhat, should be somewhat less weighted than ELA and math, which are taught, which are tested in third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. But under the old system, they were equally weighted. So that science score was worth as much as all of your ELA achievement, which didn't make a lot of sense. So if we did apply the new weighting calculations, we would have passed. Nevertheless, we will be developing a district improvement plan. I will be asking you to take a look at it in December. But we did not wait. I mean, we knew that the data wasn't going to come in where we wanted it to be. So we didn't wait. So since April of, I should say twenty-three, since April of 2023, we've already been working on program enhancements in all of the subject areas. In ELA, we've already implemented a systematic foundational literacy program that's been very well received. It's had a lot of teacher PD associated with it, and it seems to be very well received by our teaching staff. We, Mrs. Guinan is working with our intervention teachers on implementing a systematic progress monitoring procedure for our kids that are in intervention classes to make sure that their progress is being continuously tracked and that teaching adjustments are being made according to that data. We've done more clarifying what's essential in terms of outcomes for our kids and making sure that the classroom assessments are aligned to that, right? So if you say that X is the standard, but then you assess at a lower standard, you kind of get a false sense of where your kids actually are. So we're making sure that that's tight, and Mrs. Guinan is also leading the effort on that. We've had a complete turnover of our instructional coaches. So we have three active instructional coaches right now. They're doing model lessons. They're doing professional development. They're doing midday professional development for those who maybe can't stay after or arrive early. That's been super successful. Did you tell me thirty some teachers attended the last one? Which is great. The coaches are providing classroom support. They're co-planning with teachers any number of different things. They worked to publish a guide for math instruction, sort of like the nuts and bolts of what should be happening in your math class and the nuts and bolts of what should be happening in your literacy block. I know our principals, I just had a conversation with Mrs. Ward tonight, are having one-on-one data conversations with teachers, looking at some data student by student. And, you know, really having rich conversations around that data. And they're also, our principals are working with their building level teams, we call them our PLCs, to also have data conversations, set common goals, and align those assessments with those goals and make sure that whether I have Mr. Danley, or I have Mrs. Dutton, or I have Mrs. Ward as my teacher, that I'm getting the same quality instructional experience. And then as a district, we used our most recent grant from DoDIA to join what's called a PLC cohort, which means we have access to some really great professional learning experience as well as they're sending someone in district to come and coach our team to do better work around the PLC model as well. Any questions? Yes?
I know we have a big turnover.
Yes.
Does CUSAC recognize the fact that this is?
I brought it up.
So we'll keep working.
And they actually, the county end specialist said, I realize that. That's a thing for you guys, but it's not accounted for in the law anywhere.
I just wonder if there's any process or anything we can do to try to address that. And I'm sure you know more about it than I do, but...
Yeah, it would have to be written into the law. So the process would be like a lobbying process. Not impossible. I mean, to me, it seems fair.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, now back to the fun stuff. Hi, guys. All right, so mine is a little bit more relaxed than everybody else. We're gonna travel around the district from summer to fall and just look at the amazing work our teachers have been doing, the programs that the kids have been exposed to and been involved in. So we'll just kind of look at some pictures. This is gonna work. I don't know how to do this.
Yeah, it's surreal.
It is. I'm gonna stand here. That's okay. Also, I've never used a clicker, so bear with me. Okay, we'll start in summer. Remember summer? So this was our STEM camp. The theme this year was Safari Systems. It's not animals. I thought it was animals. I was very excited. It was the body. So they made robotic arms. They made hearts. They had to make, the robotic arms had to pick things up. They all came up with different ones. They were very impressive. They were picking up, like trying to pick up cups. They were trying to pick up Post-it notes. Like it was, it's pretty impressive. I probably couldn't have done that. There's a stethoscope that they made, so they were like listening to each other's hearts. And then we had Nurse Back. She taught them hands-only CPR, which was really cool because that's a skill they could use for the rest of their life. So that was exciting. Then we had Camp Acceleration. We send kids, a cohort of kids to Fernbrook for two weeks in the summer. And we kind of try to motivate them and engage them in learning like all the STEM-type activities. They had a blast. I went out there one day thinking the hike was not a real hike. It is a real hike. So if you get invited, be prepared. It's a real hike. But it was really, really cool. They were fishing. They were cooking. They made quiche pizza and smores by like a campfire, which I thought was awesome. It reminded me of my childhood. So I thought that was great. And they had a really, really good time. You could see our friend there. You could see our friend there who actually caught fish, which is really exciting. Then we had our summer immersion camp that Mrs. Ward mentioned. So here's some of the activities that they were doing. It is all in Spanish if you walk in. I recommend going, but if you walk in, you might be like a little lost. I know, some Spanish, so I was like, okay, we're talking about ocean animals. But they're really in it and they are having full-on conversations with each other. It's very, very impressive. It's very engaging and very fun. And then we had our summer reading program that ran at the same time as our ESL program. In this, we tacked on our high-impact tutoring grant. So part of the day, they were with a lot of our teachers, our like intervention teachers volunteered, which was awesome because we could keep those reading skills going through the summer and help those kids. And then they had one-on-one tutoring that was available to them as well, which is fun. Now, for what's been going on through the school year. So back to school, everybody came back, we're smiling with how happy they are, they were loving it. And then immediately after we get back, we do our freedom walk. And so all three schools do that, and that's a really nice way of kind of recognizing nine eleven, honoring those that passed, and kind of refocusing for what we need to do moving forward. So it's always a nice time for the kids. And then we had a lot of assemblies. We knew it was over at Endeavor, we had joint base for fire awareness, they were over at Endeavor, and then we had Jacobstown Fire Company came. This was my first time seeing this. I don't know if you guys have seen this before, but they bring this truck that has two like living room setups in there, and they show the kids how quickly a fire can spread, but they really lit it on fire, which I was just as amazed as the kids. And then they have a, there's like a timer, you can't see it in the picture, but there's a timer that shows how long it takes for the sprinklers to kick on. And they talked to them about like fire safety and what they can do, but it was a real-life demonstration. They were fully engaged and asked a lot of really good questions, so I thought that was wonderful that, that was our own town that put that on for our community students. So that was really nice to see. And then our sixth graders went to Camp Akonikin, and they're doing wild things in nature again. No, they had a great time. They're already, the staff's already planning it for next year excitedly, but this is a nice sixth-grade experience kind of to send them off with like a little bit of something special before they go on to Northern or wherever they're going to school next. And then, of course, our Halloween parades, always a good time. You see some really creative costumes. You never know who's behind the costume once they're fully dressed up, but it's nice to kind of have all the families come out, have the students there showcasing their creativity in their costumes. And then here at UES, they do the pumpkin drop, which is really, really fun. I don't think any pumpkins made it. We gotta work on our strategy. We still haven't figured out how to land it. It is high up, so, but it's always fun to see kind of all the work that goes into it and how excited they are because they always think it's gonna make it, but not yet. Whoever makes it's gonna be legendary here. And then this is our Veterans Day, some of our Veterans Day recognitions that we did around the district. I know we brought veterans in over here at UES, and there was like a Q and A, and then there was, we had parents invited and veterans invited over at Endeavor and at Lamb, and then we had the choir singing over at Endeavor, which is a nice touch, and it's a nice way for the kids to kind of honor our servicemen and women, especially not only because we serve the base, but we have a lot of veterans in the community, so that's always a nice way to kind of honor their service as well. And then, this was really exciting, we had a Vietnam Veterans Assembly for fourth grade. And one, these guys were hilarious. I could listen to them talk all day long, but it was really engaging and fascinating. They were talking about how they were drafted at like eighteen and nineteen and thrown into like a war at that age, which blew my mind, but they were sharing kind of the equipment. They let the kids try on a lot of the equipment. They got to see like the cans of food and things. They brought a lot of artifacts. And then one of them, I don't think you could see in the picture, he's a drill sergeant, and he put on his helmet and came out with adult volunteers and was like putting them through drills, and they just could not follow it to save their life. And it was just sit down, but it took, I think it took like six or seven rounds. Only one person was sitting and there was four of them, and we were trying not to laugh, and he was like, do you understand what I'm saying? And finally, he said, please, and they were all giving him grief, and they were like, you said please? But it was really cool for the kids to see and kind of get to experience kind of what other veterans has gone through and kind of hear about the history of some of our wars. So that was a unique experience that I think we're gonna continue in years to come and probably even back during months of the military.
And I think that was spearheaded by one of our M-Plots.
It was, our M-Plots, our military family counselors kind of spearheaded that, and I think we're gonna work to see if we could get them over on this campus as well. They were, they were really entertaining. And it was the New Jersey chapter, so they were New Jersey guys and some were from like the city, like from Brooklyn. So they were pretty local and they talked about some of the missions that they do, which was really cool, a nice learning opportunity. And this is just some upcoming events. We have Ski Night coming up next week. I think it's next week. I'll move and track it.
Two weeks.
I don't know if it is next week. It's next week. Look at your calendar. It's coming on the fifth. So that should be really, really fun. We had a lot of staff sign up. I just, our staff's so great when it comes to like after-school activities, summer programs, and like family nights, they really get involved, they put a lot of work into it. There's really cool activities. I won't give too much away, but there's like lava lamps, there's like some snow globes, like we're doing some really cool things. Cool for the kids, I don't know how parents feel when they take it home, but we'll figure that out. And then we are still running Passport, Math Club, and Literacy Lab and Spanish Club. Math and Literacy Lab are running until twelve nineteen for the first round, and then we have a second round coming in February. Passport, we're almost done our first session, and then we'll do our second session. So this year, we've tried to be really intentional about giving everybody an opportunity, so we're doing like round one before winter break, and then we can do round two after winter break, just to try to give everybody an opportunity. And like Mrs. Ward said, we have our World Culture Festival coming in February. There was more, but let's just start with these for now, and we'll go from there. And that's it. So I just, I'm gonna echo Mr. Danley. Thank you for supporting all of the activities. Thank you for supporting all the work that our teachers do. I can't like praise them enough just for the hard work that goes into all of the summer programs. It's a lot for the after-school programs, it's a lot, and for these family nights. I hope you guys all have a wonderful Thanksgiving and enjoy your time off. Hopefully, you're off and time with your families.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions?
I'm only this person. Sorry.
Okay, that's it for presentations.
Any communications?
No.
Communications, public comment on agenda items only? Number eight, personnel. Make a motion to approve the following personnel actions based on the recognition of superintendent. Eight point one, three. Eight point eight. Second.
Mrs. Marrow?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlinger?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Knighton?
Yes.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes.
Number nine, instructional. Motion to approve the following instructional items based on the recognition of superintendent. Nine point one, three, nine point two. Second.
Mr. Greenlinger?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Knighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Marrow?
Yes.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes.
Number ten, financial. Motion to approve the following financial items based on the recognition of superintendent. Ten point one, three, ten point thirteen. Second.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Knighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Marrow?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlinger?
Yes.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes.
Number eleven, traffic. Motion to approve the following traffic items based on recognition of superintendent. Eleven point one, one. Second.
Mr. Knighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Marrow?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlinger?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes.
Number twelve, transportation. Motion to approve the following transportation items based on the recognition of superintendent. Twelve point one, twelve point three. Second.
Mrs. Marrow?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlinger?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Knighton?
Yes.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes.
Number thirteen, other business. Motion to approve the following other business items based on the recognition of superintendent. Thirteen point one, thirteen point five.
I just wanna clarify something here, where it says approval of HIP reports to date, and there are four reports listed, and they all say introduce next to them, you're not actually approving those. Tonight, you're gonna be introduced to them.
Second.
Mr. Greenlinger?
Yes.
Mr. Green? Mr. Knighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Marrow?
Yes.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes.
Number fourteen, policy. Motion to approve the following policy items based on the recognition of superintendent. Fourteen point one, fourteen point two. Second.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Knighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Marrow?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlinger?
Yes.
Mr. Riddick?
Yes.
Sixteen, superintendent.
I think we had enough poor time tonight, but I do want to take just a moment to mention that all three of our classroom officers have started. They are in the main offices of all of our schools. They are out and about at Arigal and Dismissal. They wander the hallways, they check the doors to make sure everything's locked the way it's supposed to be. They help with parents coming and going when there's an event and the front office staff gets, gets a little backed up with that. And they spend time with the kids like in lunch and greeting them in the hallway. So it's going really well. I heard, I asked all three schools and got nothing but positive feedback. And that's really it. The rest I have is for exec.
Any old business? New business, you've got the training proposal?
I received a proposal from your attorney, and their rate is going up twenty dollars an hour starting January first. So they currently charge one hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour, they start charging one hundred and eighty-five dollars an hour. So you don't have to approve it tonight, I just needed to know if you wanted to renew their appointment or if you would like me to request proposals from all training firms and put it out to, to all the training firms to provide you the proposals.
A suggestion would be continued?
Nope. You will vote on that at your reword committee contact.
Okay. Should we do public session first or?
Yeah, because you won't need to take any action, everybody can leave.
Public comment. And we're ready to, second. Make sure to.
Yeah, everybody can leave.
Yeah.
So we, we have to have an executive session, we put it at the end so that you can often see the presentations without waiting. No action will be taken after executive session. It's really just information.
And it's about, which is about student personnel, student and personnel?
Personnel and yes, student DCA. Thank you, everybody, it's a great presentation.